Six o'clock Tuesday, June fourteenth now during the meeting of the Westboro Select Board Order here in Town Hall Memorial Hall. If you would all begin, if you're able, joining us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We start with open forum. Do we have anyone here for open forum this evening? No? All right. The public hearing starts at six ten, so I guess can we jump forward?
Yeah.
I think we're still missing people for a plastic bag. I think, do we have everyone here for the Pine Grove Cemetery?
All right.
Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Edward Clinton, and I'm a registered architect, and I'm working with a group, the Westboro Cemetery Memorial Project, and we're striving to build a memorial for the people that were buried in unmarked graves in Pine Grove Cemetery that were patients at Westboro State Hospital. So we have some plans available to look at as to the work we proposed to do and the work we've completed. We've been together now for about a decade trying to raise money and construct this project. And we're here today seeking the selectmen's letter of allowing us to continue our work. And we're very grateful to the board to hear us and consider our request. And again, it's something we're continuing to do. We began it. So this is kind of a graphic that explains what our mission is. And it's to build a memorial which will include the names of all buried in unmarked graves, to raise public awareness of all these forgotten souls, and finally afford these people the dignity that they deserve. So right now, we're looking at this, about seven hundred and sixty people that were buried in this field. We want their names and dates, and we're striving to give a general location to any family members or interested parties that want to pay their respects to these people. So our plans, so this is kind of like a floor plan. And what we had designed to do is to create a paved area so that, you know, everyone could have a nice area to observe the names in seven pillars, which will include a hundred names in each pillar. The pillars, we're going to have the pillars will be mounted with cast bronze plaques with the names on them. And again, the names will include the dates, which they were buried. The field was used starting in the mid eighteen eighties up until mid nineteen nineties. So it was, it was very gracious. You know, we found as we've been doing the research that Westboro actually provided the space for these people to be laid to rest. And I'm sure the families, once we identify them, will be greatly indebted to Tommy Westboro. So that's, are there any other questions?
There are other folks that would like to be introduced?
Barbara Banks, and I've been researching the names, and we have close to seven hundred confirmed, and we're still researching the others that are there. And we obtained the records from the DPW and through the Town Hall death records. So we're pretty confident that we have all the names. And we have an opportunity now to get a grant from the state for some money, but we have a deadline of the end of June. So we're hoping that you will see fit to approve this. And we have been working, we worked with George Barrett, we've worked with the DPW, we've tried to include everyone, and we're grateful for all their help.
And then everything we've done over there has been, we've got it clear through the people that maintain the cemetery to make sure we're not doing anything disrespectful or aligned with the monuments and the tools over there.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sir?
I'd just like to say something. I have been so blessed to work with so many incredible people. I hope I don't get choked up, but in particular, Ed Clinton has had a son, a brother who had mental illness, it was at Westboro State Hospital. He visited him almost every day, every week for years. He's a talented architect, and he donated countless hours. And Don Gage, I believe he did a lot of research. And everybody, we have about twenty core of committed people who have gone over and beyond the call of duty. And it's time we shed some light on the darkness of these people who suffered so dearly. Fifty-one years ago, I suffered severe mental illness. They said I would never recover, but I did recover. I served with distinction on the Board of Trustees at Westboro State Hospital for twelve years. I'm now on the area site board for the Department of Mental Health. And I'm committed to really, I'm sorry, I'm shaking because I'm very passionate about this.
You're okay.
I'm committed to getting rid of stigma and pointing people towards wellness. And I have personally observed from my own journey that wellness is an attainable goal for the mentally ill.
Would you give us your name, sir?
Gwen Malloy. I've lived in Framingham for sixty-four years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a hard act to follow. I should have had you go last, Glenn. I'm Amy Morgan. I'm a licensed social worker. And in nineteen ninety-one, I started working for the human service organization Advocates, where I spent twenty-eight years as a career there, and visited Westboro many, many times, and was on the old units, and helped people get out of the hospital and into community living. And I'm a committee member, and had the thought to ask DMH, well, I want to say that this whole project, and what's already been erected, has been at the fundraising of a tiny, small group of people with bake sales, raffles, Barbara making things, selling things. And we've been able to get this far, but we still need more funding. And the Department of Mental Health committed a bunch of money for the end-of-the-year spending with a June thirtieth deadline, but said, we need some kind of letter from the town of Westboro to say they're in agreement, even though we have it already partially erected. And that's why we're here tonight, and hoping that we'll still be able to get those funds from DMH to buy the stones, buy the granite pillars, and continue with the project. So thank you for hearing us and having us tonight.
Thank you for coming. Any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So very supportive of this project and thrilled to see you all here. A couple of years ago, pre-COVID, I had an opportunity to attend one of the remembrance ceremonies, and it was extremely informative and certainly very moving. Actually, Mr. Malloy, I think that's the first time I met you there. And anyway, I know I met a few of you. So just a couple of questions. I'm curious to know, from a fundraising perspective, how much more do you need to raise to complete the project? Including obviously what you might anticipate from the grant? If you have a ballpark, I'm just curious.
I would say it's probably in the forty-five thousand dollar range that we need to raise.
Okay.
And again, costs of, in any kind of construction endeavor have gone off the charts.
Sure.
So we're hoping that we can get it done for forty-five thousand.
Okay. And I know that some of the, it sounds like maybe some of the research is still ongoing. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, but a few names, with COVID, we sort of, everything was put in.
Right, right.
So we hope to finalize on.
So that, go ahead.
Excuse me.
No, that's okay.
So we're going to cast these in bronze, these names, so we have to be relatively, you know, pretty certain of the names. So we're just trying to confirm the names and the dates. And if we could get some location, I have a place in the memorial for like a map of the field to give people an idea.
Right. That was, so you answered both my questions. One was obviously having certainty of what's going on the casts. So that's a little bit of a work in progress. Yep. Go ahead. No, no.
The names are, of course, are not of public record, but we also wanted to be respectful of families. So we did put a public notice out in the Metro West Daily News and the community, and we ran that for thirty days, and gave an email address and a phone number so that family members wished to not have a family member listed, they had that opportunity to read the public notice. But we didn't get any contact.
Okay, great. And I think a map, I think for historical significance of, because if anyone hasn't been over to the location, it's pretty moving to go over and try to self-identify. I know the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and others have kind of continued to try to trim around those areas. I think our own DPW to some extent, but it's painstaking work. So I think a map, having that so that, you know, we can kind of cross-reference and see where folks are generally would be beautiful. So thank you. I fully support this.
So having many family and friends that are buried in that cemetery, I think this is a really wonderful event. And I applaud you for the work over the years to get this to where it is today, and completely so in support of it. My family actually abuts that cemetery, and I know that area very well. My wife rode her bike back there as a child growing up quite often. I guess just a couple of questions. First, I guess, the timeline, you know, just understanding now that you're, you know, you're going through this grant process. What is your goal? There sounds like there's already been some work that's already been begun. What is the goal to try to?
So our goal with this funding we're getting from the state is to buy the granite and to purchase it, have it delivered to the site, and erect it. So, and then, once that is complete, then we would still have to raise money to buy the bronze plaques and have them attached to the granite pillars. So it's, the timeline is a function of how quickly we can raise the money. This state grant is going to be extremely helpful. It'll allow us, again, to get the granite up. But the bronze plaques are extremely expensive. And so that's our next fundraising opportunity.
We have, sorry, we have an incredible amount of money in, we have personally raised, I checked the account a few days ago, it's over eleven thousand dollars we have in our account that we got through grassroots.
And that's in addition to the nine thousand that we spent for the platforms and stuff.
Fantastic. You mentioned the map. Will there be any other markers out in the field to kind of indicate here?
Right. So George Barrett, who was on our committee and who was a previous selectman in the town, had some scouts on Eagle Scout projects mark all the individual graves, and they're marked with clay markers just below the surface of the ground. So as clay does, it is deteriorating, it erodes. And so we have pictures of it, but we don't, do not have the memorialized maps. So I'm going to try to draw something that give us some idea that of how they're laid out with some markers that, you know, so it's something I'm still working on and trying to, but that stone, so the, so this is kind of a three-D image of the memorial. These are the pillars with a hundred, each pillar, there are seven pillars, each with approximately a hundred names on the pillars. And in the middle would be a flat stone with, there'll be some inspirational quotes on the side of the stone, and then on the top, I'm envisioning the map to be laid out on the top. So that as you're looking at each individual pillar, you'd be able to see the layout of the field on the.
But we are fundraising efforts and kind of what we've quoted and what Department of Mental Health is willing to give, does not include any additional markers for that part of the field. So it's, it's really erecting the memorial. So we won't be marking the graves.
And you answered some of my other questions there, too. I love the design. I think it's fantastic. It really provides an area where people can come and provide, you know, provide their respects and learn more about this. So I'm extremely supportive, and I appreciate you bringing this forward.
You also have a GoFundMe campaign.
Thank you for saying.
I'm wondering if it'd be possible in the announcement section of the website. We're not allowed to, are we?
Well, we don't, it's a private organization.
It's a private organization. Okay. I will post the link to it on my Facebook page and share it that way.
I don't post much on Facebook, but I will do this.
So folks, if members of the public wanted to support this, we'd connect them with the GoFundMe page.
Thank you. We have a Facebook page. We do have a website. We are a 501(c). So the donations are, you know, a tax donation.
What is the Facebook page, if you don't mind?
It's Westboro Cemetery Memorial Project.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't think it says Pine Grove. I think it's Westboro Cemetery Memorial Project.
Honored that we can support you this evening. Do I have a motion?
Sure. I move to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute the agreement for license to allow the Westboro Cemetery Memorial Project to erect a monument at Pine Grove Cemetery under the supervision of the Department of Public Works.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, select board members. We really appreciate it.
Now we can move to open the public hearing. Somebody want to?
I move, we open the public hearing to consider the operation of premises for Tang Farm Corporation doing business as Chengdu at one fifty-seven Turnpike Road.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Now we're open.
Nope. Public hearing is open.
Public hearing is open.
That was just the, just the opening.
No, 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 no. Come back, Tang.
Tang.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yes. So we just opened the public hearing so that individuals from the public could be here to speak if they, it was posted, I believe, in the community advocate, in multiple publications, to allow people to respond. But now, if you could sort of give us your name and the description of the project, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
My name?
Yes.
My name Kuroon Tang. As a manager over at Chengdu Restaurant, and located at one fifty-seven Turnpike Road, Westboro, Massachusetts, zero one five eight one.
So the alteration of premises in front of you is for altering the premises for the liquor license so that alcohol can be served on the deck that they're building?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're building an eight hundred and seventy square foot patio that will have twenty-five, or sorry, twenty-eight seats. And so it requires this board's approval. This is, this is not like that sort of temporary alteration premises we did during the pandemic. This would be a permanent one. And so after your approval, it would go to the ABCC for approval. And so the deck is still being built. The pad, yep. And so your, your approval would be subject to the getting a certificate of occupancy for the patio.
After here, we have to send it to the ABCC, have ABCC approve that.
And then you need the permit from the building department to occupy.
Yes, your building department already passed away very close to the finish.
Yep.
Okay.
So we should do this first and then, but you know, the timeline was totally mixed up.
Yep.
Any questions?
All right. I just want to thank you for having your business here for so many years. You've been a long-standing business. Love the addition. I think it's nice and fully support this.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, say Tang, welcome. Good to see you. And I'm glad to see you that you're making the investment in the property in the town. I think it's going to be a really nice area for people to enjoy your product, your food, and have a really nice area for them to do that. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I do have one question. It looks like the main entrance to the deck is through a room that you often use for functions?
The main entrance to the deck is through the restaurant. And we do have emergency access, you know, so that will be just for the extra use.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Now we go to questions from the public, if there are any, correct? Anyone here interested? No? All right. No, thank you very much for coming this evening. Now, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the alteration of premises for Tang Farm Corporation DBA Chengdu at one fifty-seven Turnpike Road on the condition that a valid certificate of occupancy is received.
Second that?
All in favor? Any other comments? No? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Look forward to stopping by.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much. Site plan overview, one ninety to two twelve Oak Street. Do we have the participants for that? No? Thank you. Please come forward. Please come forward. Yes, yes.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Barry Yatchison, I work for WDA Design. I am, uh, working on a, uh, project and looking for your, uh, approval eventually, I guess it's my understanding, we come to see you first, go to the planning board, uh, do our discussions through them, and then you'll see us back here for another presentation. Uh, working here with Shammy, with the, uh, the architect, and, uh, site plan for a project over on Oak Street and Milk Street at the intersection. It's a, uh, fronted by about five hundred and twenty-six feet on Oak Street and four hundred and thirty-four feet on Milk Street. It's bounded on the north by the Massachusetts Environmental Police. To the south is the District Court, to the east is Technology Parkway, and to the west is the Stage, Stagecoach Plaza. And I believe that would be the courthouse here, Mass Tech, Stagecoach with 135. This is a 2.1 acre lot, uh, currently now is fairly wooded with a couple of dry paved, uh, accessways and old driveway for, uh, Oak Street and, uh, an easement for the courthouse. The intention is to remove those, uh, existing pavement and replace it with a, uh, two buildings, uh, three-story, uh, roughly about a little less than eighteen thousand square foot, twelve units. Uh, you know, over here for the separate building. The site will have its own septic system, will be collected, and there's an improved, uh, Title V system to be installed up here, and then around the site, there is a collection for stormwater. Oops, sorry.
Well, that's helpful.
Can anybody hear me anyways?
Yeah.
Uh, that, uh, will meet the town's stormwater and Mass DEP requirements. Parking will be, uh, below grade for these units over here underneath and then living space above. Um, we do propose to have a few of the lots, uh, capable of electric vehicles, and I think that's about it. If you, uh, have any questions?
Sure. Nope.
Yeah, and we need to open the other one.
Thank you.
Questions from anyone on the board who wants to start?
Sure, I'll, I'll give it a go first. Um, so thank you for bringing this forward to us. Um, uh, it's great to see that piece of property be developed. Um, it's been a while since I think it went out to auction, so it's, it's great to see it, it's kind of been laying fallow for, geez, long time. Um, you know, especially since they moved the road there that originally went up between the courthouse and that lot of land, probably twenty years ago now, and redirected Oak Street around the other side. Um, I guess my only question that I would have for the planning board is, driving that road frequently, um, one of the things I'd be concerned with is, is the location of the curb cut for the, um, for the entryway, um, because people coming off of Milk Street 135 there, taking that right-hand turn, are accelerating up that hill. Uh, and, um, it's ki, it's not entirely blind, but it's not exactly fully visible as to your coming around that hill. Um, so I would just question from the planning board if there was an opportunity to somehow combine the driveway with, um, uh, with, with the courthouse, uh, over there on the right-hand side of the corner of the property. Is, is there an opportunity there or not? Uh, I do see that you have your septic system planned kind of in that area. Um, I'm not sure what could be done, but, um, is there something that we could, um, could do to just move that driveway, I think in a little bit safer area, and perhaps even combine the, uh, the curb cut with the existing driveway? Um, but other than that, uh, it's great to see the project and appreciate bringing it forward.
Um, a, a couple of questions. Um, are these units being built is for rental units or for sale as condos?
For sales.
Okay. Um, I wanna confirm that you're proposing three units as SHI qualified affordable housing?
That is correct, yep.
The twenty percent threshold, that's great. Um, looking at the plans for the two-bedroom units, I see on the ground floor you have a bonus room with a closet and a full bath?
That is correct.
Okay. My, my feeling and I guess my request to the planning board that that not be allowed, that there shouldn't be a bathroom on the first floor. Having a room with a closet and a bathroom, well, legally, because the closet's not inside the room, it's not a bedroom, but those are gonna be used as a third bedroom. And if not during the initial sale on resale, real estate agents are gonna market this as a, as a two-to-three bedroom unit, and that will have a significant potential negative impact on school population and the school budget. Um, if, if there's a, if that first floor room is a bonus room and it's intended to be used as an office, then, you know, a bathroom really isn't necessary, or at most half-bath. I prefer, and I guess my request to the planning board is, if there's a need for utility sink down there, so if someone's washing their car, or they've done some painting, a need to do cleanup, having a utility sink is fine, but to have a full bath or even a vanity bath or a half-bath down there, that room's gonna end up being used as a bedroom. And the town won't know that unless a neighbor gets upset with their next-door neighbor and complains, or unless there's an incident that requires public safety or someone to be there, because we just don't do spot checks. And so, I'm concerned that the current layout, even though it says two bedrooms, is gonna be utilized as a three-bedroom. We haven't seen the layouts of the one-bedroom units, so if there's any plan in the one-bedroom unit to have?
We, we don't have any one-bedroom, they're all two-bedroom.
Okay, the description of the project we had said there were...
Four.
Four one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units.
That's what the site plan document actually...
The site's documentation?
Mm-hmm.
We'll double-check on that.
But you're saying here that there are only two bedrooms proposed, not one bedrooms?
Correct.
Okay.
They're all, all should be two-bedroom. All should be two-bedroom. Yeah.
Similar layout, bathroom was intended to be on the first floor?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I'll just ask the, we suggest to the planning board that there not be a bathroom on the ground floor that would encourage or facilitate the use of the bonus room as a bedroom. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Shelby, any?
Sure. Um, so, a couple of questions and maybe can kind of point those out here. One is, I, I didn't see in the description, uh, where visitor parking would be allowed. I do see, obviously, that there's a covered garage space for all the units, um, where would, and how many visitor spots are there?
Um, all these units would be parked out and underneath here, and then there'll be visitor parking, and then these folks share between here and parking on the side.
So I think it would be helpful, just as you go through the site plan process, to understand how many parking spots there will be for, uh, beyond, that I guess I'll call it surface-level parking, so that aren't part of the garage, uh, space and which are not specifically allocated to a, uh, you know, a unit. And just to be clear, in the, the long building, the long one, um, you said that those would be underground parking, is that correct?
Underneath garage parking.
Underneath garage, okay. Um, so we would just kind of like clarification on the number of, um, for visitor, um, and snow removal is tucked in that, I think that's the north corner there?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I didn't see anything, but maybe I missed it, um, um, for fencing, and where I'm going here is fencing for safety, security, um, for kids, um, that's, uh, 135 is a very busy road, Oak Street, um, can be a very busy road as well. Um, just curious to kind of, any sort of safety measures that are gonna be taken, um, both for sound barrier for residents, also very near Route 9, um, and, uh, some, I guess I would just like some consideration for that. Um, so I, I guess I'll pause, are there considerations for that at this time?
Uh, this side here is a retaining wall with a, um, gargle fence, uh, that'll drop off, uh, into here, so it's gonna be tough to run off and into there.
Yeah.
While it looks all green and everything, in a pretty little picture, I don't think there'll be much playroom, it'll be up here in the front, uh, and there, I don't believe there's fencing and playing, but we can look into that.
Okay, okay, I just, again, these are, I think, for, obviously, a lot of these, the, the detail of this discussion will take place with the planning board, but as we're noting this for our, our letter. Um, so to that end, um, and I don't know to what extent this is required, but, um, if there are kids living there, I kind of look at this and sort of say, is there enough green space? I don't know if there's a requirement, um, and if that's been met by what is being proposed, but I would just ask that question. It's a rhetorical one at this point.
Was it planned for kids?
There's a, there's a, I'm sorry. Jim Robb, let's tell plan, there is a requirement for green space, it's a formula written which is open.
Okay, so I would just ask that, I'm not, I'm not clear that this meets it, so I would obviously want that. Okay, it does mean it, thank you, Jim. Um, is there, I didn't see it on the plan, proposed lighting? I, it was not clear to me in what we were presented, I think I see lights, but I'm not, it's not clear.
Yeah, there's a few that are scattered around, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay.
And, uh, there has been a photogrammetric, uh, plan provided, presented, reviewed, and...
And to follow along with, select board member Welch's comments about the entrance, I had the same concern, I won't repeat it, but also for lighting at that entrance to make sure, um, if, particularly if it were to stay there, I have concerns that that's really close to that intersection as well as that, the grade invisibility on the hill. Um, let's see here, um, just make sure I've covered everything. Um, is there a proposed, I thought there was, proposed improvement at all to sidewalks?
Uh, yeah, we've, uh, gonna bring a sidewalk along here to get access, and then the improvement of marking a, uh, crosswalk going across and join into here.
Okay.
Uh, that's the extent that I know of as today.
Okay. So when we had, uh, one of the potential neighbors in this property spectrum, we had, uh, they presented kind of where they were at in lighting and sidewalks, and we had asked them to extend that beyond kind of what they had presented, so I would love to see if it's possible that, that sidewalk to be extended along the whole perimeter, or the whole, um, path, uh, facing, um, Oak Street. Thank you. And so, I, I guess, um, Sean, through Christie, I guess I'm just wondering, um, I mean, I'm, I think this project is a very interesting one, it's using a parcel that's sort of sitting there dormant, and we certainly know we need affordable housing, so that's very appealing. I guess I'm wondering if, given the number of questions we've raised, at what point might this, I know it's not part of the process, generally, but what might this come back to us at all for how these questions are being addressed through the planning board process, through the site plan process?
So the planning board takes comments from all the different departments and bodies, and so then all of those comments get put into their packet for consideration and approval. Um, if, if they were to come back to just sort of present it to you once it was approved, um, or are you asking if you could have sort of another chance to make comments?
Well, I feel like, um, I mean, unlike other site plans that we've done, I mean, at least in the recent past, I think we're asking, or at least I have, we're asking a number of questions, um, so I, I, I guess I'll put it out to this, the planning board that if they would like us to take another look, we, you know, as they go through their deliberations and process, I would welcome that opportunity as this, you know, kind of gets more fully vetted.
Shelby? Um, in situations like this, uh, please...
Sean, you're the chair.
No, please, no.
Might you suggest that in situations like this, perhaps we could have a joint session, um, between the planning board and the, um, town board, uh, the board of select, after we've had a chance to review this project? I mean, I think that this makes all the sense in the world, because I think you raised some very interesting questions tonight. We have not seen the project yet as a planning board, and I think the input from the board of select is very important to us, so I would appreciate if perhaps in situations like this, or in other site plans we're looking at, that we look at a joint meeting so that we can really go through all the concerns that both of our boards might have.
I fully respect the, the jurisdiction of the planning board and what your role is, so whatever is appropriate through that board and through our chair, um, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to come, you know, to hear this, obviously it's part of our process, um, but I, I feel like there are just some, there are some questions, and I just wanna make sure for, for all parties concerned, we do it right and, and, you know, that everyone kind of gets answers to the questions.
Yeah, no, that's exactly...
Doesn't mean we have to like the answers, we just want answers.
Right, yeah. No, and I don't think there's any question we're trying to overstep one another's bounds, but I think particularly in site plan approval in this town, that it's important that the boards work together.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just gonna say, you know, I, I guess I'm a little, I definitely wanna see a good, you know, conversation to occur there, but I guess my only concern is that, um, if every time we have a site plan come forward, there's gonna be a joint board meeting, I'd be a little concerned with that. Um, maybe, maybe there's, we should take the lead of what the planning board needs in regards to, hey, do you think that this is something that is necessary? Perhaps this one is, perhaps this one's not.
Exactly.
I'm not sure. Uh, but I would also encourage my other, my fellow board members, uh, come to the planning board meeting. Um, I think that we can, we can ask, as a resident, ask questions there if we would like.
But, but we can't do that if, let's just say we were to come to that meeting, we'd have to convene a meeting, because we would be even speaking individually, deliberating as a body. Right?
Oh, if we were, if we were all to show up at the meeting at the same time, you're, you're...
So I totally, I don't wanna set a...
I'm not sure, because it's no longer a matter before the board.
I, I don't wanna start a new pro, precedent, I, I totally agree with you, I, I guess I'm just saying, we've raised a number of questions, and certainly there's always a lot of back and forth between the planning board and departments and feedback as part of the site plan process. I feel like we've raised a number of questions here, and I just wanna understand what it, maybe, maybe I phrased it wrong, what is the feedback mechanism to this board that our considering, our questions are being addressed?
That's the, that's the role, that's how the site plan process is set up, so you have to trust that it, they're being addressed. I, I think maybe a compromise would be for the boards to view the planning board meeting and follow the, the process, and then go to the chair if you wanna have them back. And it sounds like the planning board would be open to that.
Yeah. I would only maybe recommend that there are some inconsistencies with the plan, with sort of what was stated in the plan as to what's being completed here, 'cause it did not say twelve two-bedroom units. Um, if perhaps they could update this and come back to us with a brief update confirming, I guess, the actual parameters of the project.
Well, I think that's the important thing, is to come back and share with us in some format, like, you know, the curb cut thing I just brought up, is that, it'd be nice to get some follow-up, like, how did that turn out?
And we do have Patrick Kiora, our liaison, so, and you've been great about providing us with the information, so I'm gonna kind of...
We all would like that, I mean, I can, I can start to bring notes and, you know, share with you all. I, I don't know if that's a circumstance...
I think just knowing when those meetings are gonna take place, so as early as, knowing that this is a, I'm gonna call it a hot button, so we just wanna know when it's coming up. Christie, I think that's a great suggestion, that we, we follow that, and if we have questions along the process, I think we have a great relationship with the planning board, certainly with our town planner, that we can kind of say, we've got some other questions, and, you know, and, though to, Alan, to your point, recognizing that, you know, we potentially make a decision tonight and it kind of leaves our, our... and it kind of leaves our, our sphere, so...
Can I clarify one thing? That just was brought to my attention, and something that came up after I got on board on the project, but per the Board of Health, the units is going to be six two-bedrooms, six one-bedrooms. So that does...
And, and the one-bedrooms, do those all, how many bathrooms do the one-bedrooms have?
Probably two and a half, but we'll have to look at your concerns as far as...
With the bonus room.
With the, yeah, we'll have to look at that with your concerns, so, noted.
So the same issue there, yeah.
Any other further questions?
Can I just clarify for the boards, so the Board of Health, had you reduced the number of bedrooms in the project because of the subject?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so no further questions, so do we want to put together then?
Still, we'll do that. Yep.
You captured it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any, so, any other discussion on the topic? Jim, yes, please.
Thank you for, thank you for recognizing me, Jim Robbins, town planner. Just two points. First, the planning board does take very serious all of your comments. So for example, the most recent site plan review that we did on Oak Street for Spectrum, we brought up the sidewalks, the crosswalks, the lighting, all of those things Spectrum has agreed to. If you look at the plans now, sidewalk across the entire furniture of their plan, they are going to either install lighting or give us money to have Mass Electric install the lighting, so that's not going to be an issue, they'll get the lighting. And the crosswalk, we're still up in the air a little bit on that. They're gonna have to show us that they don't need an extra crosswalk. The bedrooms, onto the second point. The bedrooms, we are keenly concerned about what we consider renegade bedrooms. A room that is not designated on a plan as a bedroom when the permit is granted, yet could be a bedroom, because we definitely have definitions in our zoning as to what is a bedroom. And you're absolutely right about the bathroom. The bathroom is a key ingredient to that. And even, and also a closet. So even though the closet might be outside the bedroom, as you pointed out, Alan, it could easily be used for a bedroom if there's a bathroom. So that is something we will look at. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Jim, thank you very much.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
And Jim, sorry, I know you're just heading back to your seat, but calling you back if you don't mind.
You need the exercise.
So the permit says this is in the garden?
Garden apartment district, yes.
Okay, so I, maybe I misunderstood, I thought it was in the, or is it overlay? I thought it was in a business highway.
It's its own district. So we have several garden apartment districts in town. In all the years that I've been here, this is the first one I've permitted, believe it or not.
Okay, okay, so this property is in its own district?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
It, there are several garden apartment districts, but this property is the only property in this area with that zoning designation. There are no others on Oak Street, there are no others on Milk Street, north of Route nine. There are some south of Route nine, Carlton Gardens, for example.
Yeah.
It's the same zoning.
Jim Good, Jim?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No, 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 no.
Something else.
Thank you very much, Jim. All right, any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming here this evening.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Next, we have the request for an exemption from the plastic bag reduction bylaw requirements as amended.
Yep, so we have two requests this evening for, one is for Giulio's Liquors, and the other is for Tractor Supply. Both are asking for the six-month extension of implementation. I noted for you in your packet that when the original bylaw was passed, there was six months before the effective date, and then there was the provision for the board to allow for another six, up to another six months. And I did provide you with minutes showing how the board considered it at that time. The difference with the amendment is that the six-month to effective date doesn't apply to amendments to the bylaw, and so therefore it would become effective as soon as we hear back from the Attorney General and whether or not it's approved. So we were originally targeting the June 20th, 2022 date for compliance, which was about three months past town meeting, but we did hear from the AG's office that we shouldn't expect a response until July 10th. So now we're targeting with businesses the July 18th date. There are two sort of major components to this. One is that the bags must now be completely biodegradable, and then the, the other is, is the requirement for a 10-cent charge. So we've heard from businesses that, you know, certainly getting rid of their existing stock of bags is a concern, and then the other piece is updating their point of ser, point of sale systems to charge that 10-cent fee. So we did hold a public meeting on May 25th, and those were the concerns that we heard. There wasn't a huge turnout for attendance, but it was on Westboro TV, and Zach, our EDC coordinator, as well as Jen Sullivan, our public health director, have done some extensive outreach, trying to make sure people are aware that this is coming. So before each night are those two requests, one from Tractor Supply and one from Giulio's Liquor.
And it also sounds like at our June 28th or at our July meeting, there'll be other...
Just the June 28th meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, because the July 18th, so the day before would be the, the date that we're targeting. So we gave ourselves a week, hoping to get that, that approval. Or, or disapproval, the response.
All right, is anybody here to discuss this, or?
No, they're, they're not, so...
Sure.
Can I ask just a quick question? Christie, you said Tractor Supply, I thought Boston, so Giulio's, I think we saw in our letter, Boston Ski and Tennis as well. I just want to make sure they're included.
Yes, they had a letter to do the tub.
Okay, so all three, right.
Boston Ski did, is in there.
I didn't, I didn't see the Tractor Supply.
I didn't see, I don't see the Tractor Supply, but sure.
All right, I correct, that's corrected. So Boston Ski and Tennis and Giulio's, so those two, sorry about that.
And if I understood correctly, as I read through the notes and history here, the desire or the suggestion of council is to vote on these individually?
Right, so at the time, the town manager had recommended a policy, so that could just be implemented going forward. Council had recommended that, that they be taken on a case-by-case basis, which was, which is what the board of selectmen at the time decided to do.
So I move to exempt Giulio's Liquors from compliance with the new requirements of Article 33 of the general bylaws as set forth under Article 37 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for a period of six months or until January 18th, 2023.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions?
Perhaps not for this meeting unless, because I don't want to start a whole discussion, but, so I would imagine just from a practical perspective, there will be businesses, once this is in effect, that go, what? I didn't know about this, didn't hear about the public hearing, et cetera. And so at that point, I believe it becomes a matter of enforcement, is that correct by this, by this board through you, through your office?
Right, so previously, when the other, when the original bylaw went into effect, when we were be, were made aware, so it was sort of enforcement by complaint. So when we were made aware of a situation, our first response was to send a letter, just making sure the businesses were aware.
Okay, so I guess my, my feeling is that we need to move forward, but understanding that amendments don't allow for sort of that same grace period as implementing a new bylaw, that we would offer some level of forgiveness, and, you know, making sure we take time to educate our businesses, but with the understanding they have to come into compliance, because it is, yep, okay, great.
And we have encouraged, I know I said this, but we have encouraged our businesses to, to be paying attention to our communication, because there is the chance that one or both of the amendments don't get approved by the AG, so...
And, and could businesses still, is the window to apply for exemptions now closed?
No, because you can also take them up for your June 28th meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so they could still be concerned, sorry, thank you.
All right, so moved and seconded, all in favor? Another motion?
Okay, I move to exempt Boston Ski and Tennis from compliance with the new requirements of Article 33 of the general bylaws as set forth under Article 37 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for a period of six months or until January 18th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Sorry, I was confused, because we just voted on a motion that wasn't really, that was, yeah, never mind, okay.
Any comments?
I guess, I don't know, are they a single location? Because I think that's kind of the big criteria that we're using to determine whether or not they are a single location.
Yes.
That was the criteria that the board used at the time, understanding that all businesses had that six-month window, so...
All right, all in favor? Okay. All right, on to our next...
Do we need to, I'm sorry, the first motion included Giulio's?
Yeah.
Okay.
The second one was Boston Ski and Tennis.
Okay, I just want to make sure, sorry, you guys.
Next, we have the West Park Drive Extension, Flanders Road, Mass Works Project Update, Contract Authorization and Recommendation. I think we have folks here for this portion of the meeting.
I can give an update, and then if Mark and Jim want to come up, that would be helpful. So this is an agenda item, focuses on the West Park Drive Extension, the Mass Works Project, where there would be the extension of West Park Drive to Flanders Road. The Mass Works grant that we applied for in partnership with Caruth Capital was for, for the town portion, it was for the construction of the traffic light, and then the private portion would be the extension of West Park Drive. There's, the grant also funds some work related to the B-walt, so there would be some connection and development of the, the B-walt trail in that area. Given that prices for construction are extremely high, you know, we as the town, and also Caruth as the private contractor, or the private developer, have experienced some significant increases in costs. And so we were able, with, with, in working with Caruth, were able to obtain some additional funding in the Mass Works Grant, which will fully cover the cost with some contingency for the construction of the traffic light and associated work under the town's grant. And so part of this request is authorization from the board to, to authorize me to, to sign that contract. And then there's some additional work where Caruth has gone to the planning board to talk about some adjustments related to the West Park Drive Extension project and what that might look like. So Mark Verro from Caruth and also Jim Robbins can speak to that. And then the third piece of this is recommendation, so similar to what you just did in the site plan process, where you make recommendations to the planning board, there's a memo on your, on your desk that you, for your, you to approve, sending to the planning board, asking that the planning board recognize the cost of this project as mitig, as mitigation going forward in the development of the Office Park. And I think Jim and Mark can also speak to that, so...
We're gonna do this as a, a two-part presentation. So as you know, Caruth Capital, as Christie explained, has been experiencing a lot of price increases for the cost of construction for their proposed road. The planning board back in April of '21, so over a year ago, approved a subdivision plan that extended the roadway from the driveway to 2200 West Park Drive down to Flanders Road. The driveway was going to become part of the road at that time. The driveway would have been eliminated, and there would have been a new route to that lot, which currently is occupied, has a building on it. And the new road would be constructed all the way to the intersection of Flanders Road. Christie explained earlier, there was going to be an intersection. You've all seen a, a presentation on this project, an intersection with a signal and a bike trail that would be under the control of the signal for safe crossing of Flanders Road. Construction prices have increased to the point that when we, we bid the public work, the Mass Works work, it came in higher than the total grant amount. So we approached with the help of Caruth, Mass Works staff, and the undersecretary of the OEA to get an extension and a budget increase. We were successful rapidly, very quickly. Got the increase because it's not just Westboro, this is happening, and this is happening to all the Mass Works projects right now. So we, we got an increase in the budget, and then we were able to speak with the low bidder, who's AR Belly, to give us an extension on the time that we could have to enter into the contract to do the Mass Works portion. In the meantime, Caruth had approached the planning board about amending or modifying, we call it modifying the definitive plan, to change the level of construction in the roadway. So the driveway that I mentioned earlier is a boulevarded driveway. There's an island in the center of it that allows two-way traffic. That will now serve as the first 700 feet from the current cul-de-sac down as Flanders Road, I'm sorry, as West Park Drive Extension to Flanders Road. The remaining 2,000 feet will be, as originally planned, a brand-new road. But in saving the construction of that 700 feet, it saves Caruth significant money, and it doesn't harm either the bike trail or West Park Drive. It still provides safe passage for both vehicles and for the bike path. And as a matter of fact, for the bike path, it may even be more beneficial, because it's now separated from the road. The bike path leaves the roadway and it goes cross-country, whereas before, the road would have been right up against the bike path as the road was being relocated. So there's some cost savings in doing it this way. And the planning board gave Caruth, in the modification, multiple numerous waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations, as a matter of fact, nine waivers. And the planning board approved this new plan last week, last Tuesday night, a week ago tonight. Through conversations with Caruth, and this is where I'm going to give it over to Mark, they were still concerned about the future of the road and what might be the impact to them if there were any changes to any of the businesses on West Park Drive. So I'm going to give it to Mark.
Good evening, Mark Verro, Caruth Capital, 116 Flanders Road, Westboro. Here tonight to ask for a recommendation from the select board to the planning board that as long as we are below the total permitted square footage and associated parking of Westboro Office Park, that's currently MIPR permitted at 1.7 million square feet, and the associated parking depending on the use. We are requesting that as long as we're within that permitted range, that the town would not, the town or the planning board would not request for us to build that section of the road that we're asking, that we can use what's there existing right now. And the other part of our request is that a recommendation, and it's non-binding, that much of this project is, is mitigation work that we're doing in advance. If you recall, this, this, by putting in this extension, we're not gaining any additional build-out that we can do. Whatever's there, we can build now without putting this road in. So given the benefits to relieving traffic from Route nine, providing the B-walt trail, an important item that people overlook is that it's very hard to get out of Flanders Road at 5:00. And there's not that much use right now, so there's, there's a lot more coming out. Having a light there to calm the traffic and allow people to leave their driveways is a benefit. So what we're asking for is, we're, we're paying the mitigation forward, and we're asking the town to, boards to give us some consideration, non-binding consideration, sometime in the future when we do build out the lots that are currently available and not built out.
Thanks, any questions?
I just have one question for, for Jim. It's been a little while, I think it was almost a year ago when this first, I sat in one of the planning board meetings and this first came to my attention. Not entirely related to this particular topic, but was, there was also a, I thought there was a, a study that was going on, that there was also going to be modifications to the, the light... that there was also going to be modifications to the, the light down on Old Flanders Road on East Main Street. Is that still something that is going on today? Is that something that's still part of this discussion?
So that's not part of this project. As you know, there was Mass Brigham's permitted by the planning board on West Park Drive, and that project, as you know, didn't get a permit from the state, Health, Board of Health.
I mixed the two together.
And that's where that mitigation was coming from, but no, Caruth is not going to be required to do anything at Flanders Road in East Main.
Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, so I'm, Jim, I, I'm such a visual person, so I'm sorry we don't have sort of a picture here. So, I'm picturing the, the new entrance that took the light and then heading into the Caruth property. So, basically what we're saying is, or what is being asked is, that there's an existing roadway and boulevard-style entry, leave that and really effectively start the new work furthering. Is that really what's being asked?
Correct. So, the, the road's about two-thousand-seven-hundred feet long. The first seven hundred feet will continue to be the bou, the boulevard that exists currently. Originally, the entire road, all the way from the cul-de-sac that exists now to Flanders Road was going to be brand-new. It was going to meet town standards with construction methods, et cetera. Using the boulevard, which if you drove out there today, you would think it was a boulevarded road because it's very wide. It meets our standard, it just has an island in the middle, we consider it a driveway. But it, it's perfectly safe for two-way traffic, and that saves Caruth. That would remain as it is, and from the end of that driveway is where the new road would begin, all the way to Flanders Road. And that portion of the road is built to town standards.
But just to be clear, the sport is not being asked to make that decision. That decision has already been made by the planning board. So, your, your actions tonight are to authorize me to sign the contract, which would basically allow this, the Mass Works Grant to be expended for this project. Caruth is, has committed to moving forward with their portion of the project and has, has asked for this memo.
And, and what is the additional, you've, I think it was in a memo, your last town manager update, but I don't recall. What is the additional cost? What did we get? Was it a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand or something?
Was it four-hundred thousand? It was about four-hundred thousand additional?
The additional money?
Yeah, it was, we got an additional three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars.
And that on the, to the town?
Yes, to the town for the public work, which is the signal, the widening of Flanders Road and the bike trail.
The, the grant is, is fully supporting the town's work.
Yeah, okay.
And, and Shelby, just to be completely thorough, that three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars is in addition to the original ground amount, which is one-point-two million.
Right, right.
Anybody else?
So, we only have, we have a motion here on the contract, I understand that. I guess I'm not, we don't have a motion around this letter, and so I'm not sure. So, I'm happy to move forward the, if we're ready for the motion, I'm happy to make it. I'm just not sure what the letter is.
I can come up with a motion for the letter.
But I, I guess I still have questions about that, so I, it, to me, that's independent of the motion, so.
Yes.
The first motion.
Yes.
You want to make it?
Wait.
Okay.
I move to authorize the town manager to execute a contract with A.R. Belly, Inc. to complete the town's portion of the Mass Works Project.
Second?
Patrick, be me to it.
Okay, any comments? All in favor? Okay, four-zero, four being present.
So, the agenda item form speaks to the letter, we just didn't have it finalized yet. So, so there's no, there's no motion, but you would need to make the motion to send that to the planning board.
So, there is no motion?
So, the motion would be?
There's no motion in your packet, but the agenda item board does speak to the letter.
So, the motion would be, move to send the letter to the planning board as presented.
Perfect.
Couldn't have written it better myself.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion?
Well, I guess, this is the first time I'm seeing the letter, so I'm really, to be honest, I have not had a chance to look at it. I'm sure it's all copacetic and, you know, so. I guess I would ask, how ti, how critical is this? Is this something we can vote on in our next meeting? I just?
It's, the timing is critical. We just had a discussion on Friday related to the development of this letter, which is why you're just seeing it today. So, we did, we drafted the letter, we worked with the planning board chair and vice chair. Sean, as the vice chair, has sat, sat in on that meeting as well. We did work that through with town council, and also, the Caruth has seen the letter.
And, and so in essence, we're asking for these, based on the five bullet points that are being specifically called out, that the planning board would consider these as part of mitigation specific to this project or future projects?
Specific. Specific to the development of Westboro Office Park, so future projects.
Yes, it's, it's a non-binding recommendation, and it applies to the park as long as we're below the permitted MIPA amount. If we go over that, then this recommendation does not, not apply.
Yeah.
And it is key that it's a recommendation to the planning board.
Yes, and it mentions that amount, you'll see here at the bottom of the letter.
And it, and it would be the planning board's discretion to decide the level of mitigation based on whatever specific development was happening in the park.
Okay.
Versus, you know, the dollar value that Caruth has put into the significant improvements.
Yeah, and those five bullets are just the benefits to the town.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I know Alan made the most, do we have a second? I lost track, thank you.
Patrick, seconded. Be prepared to vote. All in favor? Four-zero, four being present. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks very much.
Next, we have the town manager's report.
The report's long, so I'll, I'll move quickly. We had our June twenty-twenty-two Employee Excellence Award winner, and that's TJ Vudis in the DPW Cemetery Department. The select board's on our meeting schedule, you have another meeting on June twenty-eighth, which would be a typical meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for July nineteenth, which is just the one meeting in July, so it's the third week. And then we, we've left both of the August meetings on the schedule, understanding that on June tw, July twenty-fifth, we'll be opening bids for the, the two-thirty-one Turnpike Road property. Related to that property, that was posted in the Central Register on June first, as required under the procurement law. The official advertisement was also placed in the Metro West Daily News. In addition, we created a press release that was sent to multiple media outlets, including the Worcester Business Journal, Community Advocate, Boston Business Journal, New England Real Estate Journal. It was distributed to Mass Development, Mass Econ, and Mass Office of Business Development, and it was posted on CoStar. What's not in here is that it was also posted on the digital billboards and the Lyman Street sign. So, we've really worked hard to try to advertise this. We did look into a sign or banner on to, on the building, and the cost of that and the timing of that was going to be so significant that it really isn't going to make sense for our timeline.
Bid on me, please.
Yeah. Yeah, right. We are looking at doing, we are looking at putting ground signs in front of the, the theater, but also at the intersection on Milk Street.
My sense is where, I know you're not looking for comment, but where, where it's been advertised and I commend town for doing it is all the key spots where developers will be looking, so. I'm not looking for the guy.
Anything helps. So, we, we're using the online bidding platform, which is accessible on the town's website. I think last we talked, we had thirty people, thirty bidders registered. And so that's, they've also been asking questions, and we, our chief procurement officer's been issuing responses weekly. And the, the walkthrough of the property is on Thursday at one P.M., followed by a pre-bid conference, and it's important to know that only registered bidders are able to attend. And then bids are due on July twenty-fifth. Tax classification, education timeline, this is a goal that the board had given me, but also one that you had given yourselves in terms of making sure that we are talking about tax classification and taxation as we approach the November tax classification hearing. So, I worked with the finance director and chief assessor to plan for that education series. And so, July nineteenth, our chief assessor and finance director will come to the meeting just to talk generally about taxation, tax classification, sort of give all the details with some sort of homework to do ahead of time. They're going to be sending out documents. There's a video that they plan to send out the first weekend in July. So, we'll send that out to this board, but also Finance Committee, EDC, I know is very interested. But, you know, post it on the website, anyone who's interested can be prepared for that discussion. And then, at the end of that, the board, if you want to have a follow-up at one of your meetings in August, we could do that, but then we were targeting a September meeting where there could be maybe more, more questions from the public. I think something that's really important to understand, but that will be difficult, is that we're not going to be sort of dealing in real numbers, because we don't get those real numbers until closer to the tax, tax classification hearing. But just sort of understanding kind of what it means to split the tax rate, all the things that are considered, how things, the levy works, it's going to be a real education, so.
I would just say, John did a fantastic job last year with the numbers for last year. I'm just wondering if those could be brought forward this year as an example, right, to show people, you know, how do these things work, these dials?
He'll have, he'll have examples, dealing in sort of round numbers. And then just remember that the tax classification hearing, you get all of that information. You certainly can, you know, can, as, you know, as long as we're meeting timelines, you can kind of take as much time as you need, if we need to sort of schedule it a little bit earlier and then continue it. You know, maybe it'd be, it will be longer than previous years, which is fine. So, but, so he'll have all that ready for you in July. The plastic bag bylaw, we already talked about that. And then the forward bill, I had mentioned that I had gone to testify on the forward bill that the governor had brought forward, which had many things in it, but one of them was the distribution of state ARPA money. We've just, I've just learned today that the, the House bill, it came out of the House without any, any use of ARPA money. And so, we're continuing to watch that. The Massachusetts Municipal Association is working on that. We feel like it's really important, and the administration obviously feels like it's important. There's definitely that looming concern about the federal government taking that money back. So, we're just, we're watching at this point. The Community Development Office had some exciting news at the Coupe right next door. They've signed off on all of their permits, and they hope to open by the end of the month. And the DPW, the MassDOT project to move the crosswalk at Route one-thirty-five in West Meadow Plaza will begin on June twentieth. The MassDOT awarded the town two shared streets equipment grants totaling sixty-two thousand dollars. So, we'll purchase signs to enhance pedestrian crossing sites, and then a blower and plow attachments for the sidewalk snowplow. Road paving is ongoing. The town recently received additional funding through the Winter Recovery Assistance Program, which came out through the supplemental budget. And then, as of six-thirty, buildings and grounds will no longer supply our five-gallon water deliveries to Town Hall, Police Department, DPW, and Senior Center. Rather, they've installed water, water, filtered water coolers, or bottle fillers.
Christie, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, on the, on Lyman Street crosswalk improvement, so it looks great, the works that's being done. Do you know offhand as part of this work, if Lyman Street itself, I've received a lot of questions about that, if Lyman Street itself is being repaired, like paved, repaved?
Uh, yeah, so it says with paving to occur over the next several weeks.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry, you just got this, so.
And then just, you reminded me in my question I had a few weeks ago in regards to the Chauncey Street, Lyman Street. No crosswalk there right now, and the sidewalks?
Right, so, right, and I. I responded that there was no plans for that, for a crosswalk there, yep. And then, the, sorry, so the Finance Department, the Collector's Office is changing their lockbox company effective July first, so you'll just want to verify the address they're using on checks. So, it's going, it'll be the town of Westboro, but with a Wuberan address. And that's been advertised. The Fire Department had a visit from the Department of Mental Health, or sorry, Department of Public Health for an inspection, and this is the third year in a row that they had zero deficiencies and zero corrective actions, which is really rare. Also, as the board is aware, the deputy fire chief, Jason Fursky, has recently been selected as the new fire chief in the town of Natick. There is no date on here as to when his last day in Westboro is, but we expect it's this month. And then the department wants to update the board on the status of the Explorer Post. They had originally created this program that would run with the school year, but the programs were so successful that the participants have asked that it continue through the summer, and the firefighters have agreed, so it's going to continue on. They'll welcome some new students in the fall. And then, the Health Department is happy to announce that COVID-nineteen cases are on a downward trend. They also held a senior COVID-nineteen booster clinic at the Senior Center and had over sixty seniors, and there'll be another clinic on June twenty-seventh at the Town Hall from ten to twelve. There's a link to sign up on the website and Facebook page. And if residents need help signing up, they should contact the Board of Health. Certificate of Merit for Food Protection was awarded to Sabatini's for the month of May. And then a reminder that free COVID-nineteen test kits are available in the Health Department, the Senior Center and Library, and then transfer stickers expire on June thirtieth, so you can renew online or you can come to the Board of Health office.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say congratulations to TJ, and I want to thank that resident who reached out to applaud him for his work in our town cemeteries, and there was a wonderful article in the Community Advocate highlighting that. Next, we have the winter lights agreement with the Rotary Club.
Well, they're coming up. Last year, obviously, was the first year that we did, that we had, the Rotary Club did such a beautiful job downtown with our winter lights, and we had signed this one-year agreement. So, this is a subsequent one-year agreement, and they'll note a small change in it. They, they do have it in their packet, yep.
We have it here.
Thank you.
Before, before this is presented, I guess, you know, I didn't do this last time. As a member of Rotary Club, should I excuse myself from vote?
No.
No, I'm okay, okay. I just want to make sure. Disclaimer.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Wilford, Five Mary Lou Circle, Westboro, past president of the Rotary Club.
Jim O'Connor, Rotary Club of Westboro, fourteen Woodcrest Road. And behind us is Sandy Kearney, our incoming president, who'll be inducted next week on the twenty-second. And Kathy will say goodbye.
That's right, I will no longer be passed.
Passed out. In front, in front of you is just a little bit of an overview as to where we've come, and it's been a great journey. It's nice to be associated with a project that gets spontaneous excitement and cheer. And so, we are, we are happy to be involved in this project. We're going from phase one, and just, just by way of quick overview, phase one involved the, the lighting of each and every pole, decorative pole, twenty-four of them, with a garland, fake garland, as well as a festive bow, and a, a string of very nice white lights. We, we, we had twenty-four of those, and then four hundred, over four hundred multicolored bulbs on the fir tree in the center of the, the traffic rotary. I think that gives a classic look to, to the holiday season. So, marrying that together with, with wrapping the trunks on the three deciduous trees. And then the Coupe de Gras was some floodlights that were programmed for uplighting, and it was, it was great, and worked out very well. What didn't work out so well was the floodlights. Floodlights may have been a little bit too small. The town did the nice job of pruning the trees and made a small floodlight reach even harder to get up into the branches. So, going forward, that's one of the things that we've changed. We, we're keeping all of the classic things that worked very well. We would like to add another sixteen pole locations to get all forty pole locations that have the decorative lights, so that would give all in and outgoing streets with this cheery look going forward. And what we're, what we're looking at with our, with our supplier is taking each and every deciduous tree, taking down the floodlights, we've already taken them down. We're going to use them for maybe another project. We're going to use them for maybe another project in another day, but we're going to put up lights, C9, fairly good-sized lights, white, warm, a warm-white color, and probably about 300 of these, or perhaps 500 lights at the very least in the branches, so that it will give a truly, we think it's going to be a spectacular change. So that's the change going into Phase Two. And we, we also want to let you know that without the support of this Select Board, the town, and the close-in operational logistical support of the DPW Department with their bucket trucks, with their ability to work closely with us with the installing of the, of the business, advertising at each of the pole locations to help us sell fund, we would not have gotten out of the starting block, so we thank the town of Westboro. And we're moving on to Phase Two, hopefully. Kathy?
Okay. I'll talk to the contract. The only modification that we are requesting, and I have had email conversations with Kristy, is the dates. We would like them to read, we would like them to read November 15th, 2022, through February 15th, 2023, as opposed to November 1 through February 1. So we just wanted to shift them a little bit. Kristy didn't see any issue with that. I made that minor change to the contract. Sandy has signed it, so I will leave this here with you guys so that you can sign it and just email me a copy of it. Any questions for us?
You want to start? Patrick, you want to start?
I don't have any questions, I'll just comment. I think the lights were fantastic last year, and I'm excited to see the display this year. So thank you very much for doing this. You've answered all my questions, thank you.
My only question was with the extension of the program and the use of the banners, has there been any interest from other community organizations about using the banners in that timeframe?
The timeframe abides within the 90-day timeframe, so it's not an extension of that.
Right, so I don't, I don't believe it conflicts with anything, but the agreement is specific to the lights, so in terms of banners, we can double-check, but I don't believe it does.
I would expect it to just one check.
Yeah.
I am fully supportive of this. I think it's been well-received. It really, I think, really gives a pop and a warmth to our downtown that our community appreciates and wants. And I appreciate the community's support in addition to the town's, you know, to make this happen, so, that's all.
No, and no agreed, and I remember it was a huge turnout last year for the lights being turned on. It was a really tremendous occasion, and everybody was just so happy to be back out and together.
Yep.
One, one last comment here for the public, if you're watching. We will be starting our fundraising campaign very shortly because the project is expensive and we need continued support from the public. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, sure. I move to approve the proposed plan for the winter lights display as presented and further authorize the town manager to execute the license agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, any comments, questions? All in favor? 4-0, four present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see it.
Bring on winter. I'm just kidding.
We already did that one. The Active Transportation and Safety Committee Mission and Composition, are members here for that discussion, or?
I'm sorry. No, there's no members here. So there's two pieces to this agenda item. One is that we had asked several boards and committees that had one-year appointments or no terms, or sorry, just, I guess just people who had no terms, to come back and make a recommendation to the board about how they might create terms for the committee. So you did this recently with Sustainable Westboro, where you created the terms, and it was sort of opened up for people to apply, and then you'll see that later in the agenda. For ATSC, they've proposed three three-year term, or three three-year seats, one two-year seat, and one one-year seat. So that's the first part of this discussion. Do you want to take that up first?
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead.
So is one of the co-authors of the committee handbook and the guidelines, a committee of five people having three-year terms is perfectly reasonable. Their plan for staggering by having a one-year term, initially a two-year seat and three three-year seats, is not acceptable. And I'd go so far to say that, looking at the roles and tenures of the people that they recommended the three-year seats, it is manipulative and self-serving to those individuals and not in the best interest of the board in having a functional committee within the guidelines that we voted on in the committee handbook. I would propose that the Active Transportation Safety Committee, and I will make a motion, that the Active Transportation Safety Committee has terms of three years. And to start the staggering, there are two one-year seats, two two-year seats, and one three-year seat. As a way of staggering.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion?
I'm sorry, Alan, can you just repeat the staggering you're proposing?
The staggering would be two one-year seats initially, two two-year seats, and one three-year seats. So it would be a two-two-one cycle as far as reappointment, and subsequent terms would be three years.
Right, I mean, I would agree, it doesn't make sense to have three seats expiring at one time when there are five seats in total.
Right.
You know, that, so.
I think that puts a volunteer board at a real potential disadvantage. You know, you have a lot of experience accumulated, and that doesn't even take into account people that, or residents who would have maybe been serving multiple terms, back-to-back or subsequent, consecutive, excuse me, so.
Okay, any other discussion, or? No, all right. All in favor of the amendment? 4 to 0, four being present.
And so the board will consider appointment at your next meeting on June 28th. The second piece of this discussion is an amendment to the mission and goals of the ATSC. As the board is aware, members of the ATSC has been working with folks from the School Department each year on the Safe Routes to School grant. And in talking to the state, there was a suggestion made to the current Chair of the ATSC to include this as part of their mission and goals, the Safe Routes to School work. And so the proposal is that we amend their mission and goals to include, create a Safe Routes to School Subcommittee, which would include one school committee member responsible for working with MassDOT's Safe Routes to School program to make safety improvements and bike, walk, bike ability improvements to each of the schools.
Okay.
I would move that we alter the charge and mission of the Active Transportation Safety Committee as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further comments?
I would just add that at the discussion of the ATSC, where this was discussed and obviously brought forward by them, it was supported by the whole committee.
Now that we've included a school committee member, does it require their vote?
It's actually just as part of the Subcommittee, so they're not a voting member of the overall ATSC.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Further comments? All in favor? 4-0, four being present. All right, I think we're complete with the Active Transportation.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the Affordable Housing Trust presentation concerning Endicott Drive.
I'm Hank Roush, 5 Ashley Way. I'm a trustee with the Affordable Housing Trust. Kristy, is it best for me to plug in my machine, or?
Yep.
Okay.
It's still going to be set up.
I've never done this in quite a while. So why don't you stick some time down? Yes. Start cutting people off.
Oh, you're that person. At the theater.
This is when Westboro TV runs the official Cut Mall commercials.
Right, right.
There we go.
Hey, do you remember which button I pushed? Try F5. Or F11. I'm not sure. Do an escape. Try F11. Can't read that. It's coming out fine, yeah. Yeah, that's great, there it is. Somewhat technologically challenged these days.
That was pretty good. We've, we've had a lot worse.
Again, I'm Hank Roush, I'm a trustee with the Affordable Housing Trust. I wanted to just bring you up to speed on some things we've been doing and then seek your, seek your support for a, for a possibility of acquiring another piece of property and then doing a development. Really seek your support for going ahead with, with what's typically called due diligence, investigating what can be done, what needs to be done. We've done a little preliminary work, wanted to bring it to your attention first. I wanted to just take a minute to just.
Sorry, Hank, could you pull the mic a little closer?
Sure. Just wanted to take a minute to just kind of remind folks that the trust has been in business for about a year and a half, and we've done a variety of things in the last six months or so. We've been working closely with the Rogers, with the Westboro Housing Authority on trying to expand the Rogers roadside, and we're making some progress. They, the authority was able to get the Mass Housing Partnership to spend some money and get some engineering feasibility studies done. They'll be presented to the Housing, to the Housing Authority Board this month at their, at their board meeting. At Springtown Meeting, ATM, we brought forward the proposal to acquire the Baylor Avenue Tax Title property, which was approved by the town, by the ATM, and we're looking forward to seeing a memo of, a memo of understanding as soon, sometime this month, or as soon as the Town Council can bring it forward. We, tonight, I'm going to talk about the eventual, development of a town parcel that the town owns currently is off Endicott Drive. I'll give you some drawings to show you where that is, because you may not be real familiar with Endicott Drive. It's a pretty small street. We had also done, kind of, part of our role is advocacy and monitoring of the subsidized housing inventory. And in that vein, the Housing Trust funded some consulting work and did some advocacy to investigate what the potential was of maintaining the, maintaining some affordable units at the residences' Westboro Station. We've, we've got that information. It's not easy to maintain that affordability, but we have brought forward what we, what we have, and the consultants' reports and our recommendations, and passed them off to the town leadership, because at this point, the town leadership is the, is the entity withstanding to go ahead and take action. The Housing Trust is not an entity withstanding that can take action. We're also, there is, there is a, part of our role is monitoring, again, SHI and deed-restricted units. There's a deed-restricted unit that has not yet been declared as being available. There are conversations going on with DHCD and the homeowner. If it were to be, the Housing Trust is paying attention to that. We've, we've let DHCD know that, you know, if, if the unit becomes available, we would be interested in possibly exercising right of first refusal, so we're sort of monitoring that. I got to go get my next slide somehow, yeah, okay. I think I can do it that way. There we go. Okay, I just wanted to give you a locus of what we're calling the Endicott Drive property. If you look at the map that's up there, what you'll see is the Nelson Ball Pickleball Courts that are located adjacent to the Chauncey Lake parking lot, all of which fronts on Lyman Street. You'll see that behind the pickleball courts, there's a wooded area. Part of that, the town owns pretty much all of that wooded area. Part of that wooded area is dry, part of it is wet, and a, but I think it's cedar swamp, but I'm not sure. If you look in, in what is the, the lower right-hand corner, the second plot in, there's actually, the town owns that, and you, one could extend Endicott Drive, a dead-end street to give access into that property. So that parcel, and parcel ID off Lyman Street, also adjacent to Endicott Drive, partially uses Lake Chauncey Parking and Nelson Ball Pickleball Courts. We have talked with the town manager and with the Recreation Department to see if, gee, were there any pending plans or strong interest on the part of other town departments or anybody else to utilize the remainder of that? No, not really. The only thing that will be done, there is funding from an ATM to build a 20-by-20 pavilion, which is relatively small, to support the pickleball courts. So about, about 50% of the acreage is vacant. There are pieces of the site that can't be used because of wetlands. We employed WDA Design Associates, who by the way, had done the pickleball courts layout and engineering work, so it really was pretty cost-effective. They had most of the data they needed. We had them do a cursory site plan and a unit concept. Again, you know, feasibility, Recreation Department, Town Manager, no, no planned uses. WDA said, you know, that the site is, does have potential for between one and three units of affordable housing. I said one to three. What they did is they penciled in a triplex, one could reduce that, could make it any scale, just kind of, that was the maximum, the maximum utilization one could achieve on the property, ignoring zoning, zoning requirements at this point, because the area is technically, is actually technically Zone M1, but all the adjacent properties are pretty much zoned as residential, single-family. There would be, one could extend Endicott Drive to get access to the property. There's water, sewer, gas, and electric, all of that available on Endicott Drive makes it really a feasible development site. And the feasibility study, of course, they used three two-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, just to get as their stalking horse. I've got to, I'm going to have to end the slideshow, and I'll bring you up some pictures of, oh, come on, Arrow, where are you? I guess I got to hit F11 again. No, I know what I got to do. Bring that one up, I'm going to bring that one up. Okay, so this plan that I brought up is, it was prepared by WDA Design Associates. It's basically a plot plan, a line drawing of what you saw when you saw the Google Earth view of the property. And it shows the pickleball courts, the beach part of the pickleball courts, of course, in the lower left-hand corner in blue. The dark blue to, in the far-left-hand corner, lower-left corner, is kind of wetlands area. The little square that says "off-proposed," that's, that's the proposed pickleball, pickleball court pavilion, so you can see it clearly can fit in there with no problems. And they've penciled in, they've shown that one could put three, a triplex unit in there with an access drive. They also looked at, and they said, you know, if you really wanted to, you could, you could do the same thing, providing access through the parking lot. I haven't presented that here. It is unlikely that the trust would consider wanting to provide access through the parking lot. Just makes a lot more sense to, when you build affordable housing, it's helpful to couple it to a neighborhood. And since the Endicott Drive and. And they've penciled in, they've shown that one could put three, a triplex unit in there with an access drive. They also looked at it and they said, you know, if you really wanted to, you could do the same thing, providing access through the parking lot. I haven't presented that here. It is unlikely that the trust would consider wanting to provide access through the parking lot. Just makes a lot more sense to, when you build affordable housing, it's helpful to couple it to a neighborhood. And since the Endicott Drive and all the adjacent streets is basically a, probably a nineteen, late nineteen forties, early nineteen fifties development area, it's pretty much all single-family, single-floor homes. It would be, it would be best for the families to couple the, to couple this building with that complex of buildings and make the access that way. Let me bring up the, just to give you an idea what the buildings might look like. Again, WDA Design Associates reached into their inventory of buildings that they've done in the past, that they picked up, and they said, here's what a typical unit might look like. Again, we're not proposing those units. When we get to the point where we have some understanding what the feasibility is, we get done talking to various zoning boards and other folks, and we get a better assessment of what the needs, what the, what the best market, what the sweet spot of the market is for a single family, for affordable housing of this type in town, we'd make more choices and come in with other designs. I'm gonna close that up and go try and bring my slideshow back up. Should be able to get it. Start from the current slide. Okay. There we go. So, so what we're asking for, we're asking for your support. Our next steps, you know, asking for your support to say, hey, go ahead and take the next steps. We don't see any obvious reasons why this would not be a feasible, assuming we can get through all the applicable boards and committees and get the input of the community and such. Next steps for us is, I have talked with the Recreation Director. We would be invited to present to the Recreation Committee and make sure that they agree with Jennifer Kirkland's assessment that there's no problem. We'd start with the circuit of visiting with various town boards. We would schedule time with the one-stop-shop committee, which, again, is, I've visited them once before. They're very helpful. There's bound to be a bunch of other due diligence that'll come out of these various proposals. We'll certainly need to talk to DHCD. We'll have to get ourselves educated about friendly fortyBs and other zoning options. And we would look, we would look to be back here with a solid proposal, late Q four, Q one, with the idea in mind that if this is feasible, and it does look interesting, we would put, we would look for your support to put a warrant article on the Springtown Meeting in 2023. So with that, I'll address questions or any comments or questions or...
Thank you, Hank. Anyone?
I was just gonna add that this is all new for us in terms of process. And so when we, when the Affordable Housing Trust had reached out, I think Hank already said this, but we just felt like, before we sort of, they go on their roadshow, that the board sort of gives some consensus about your thoughts, maybe raise any concerns that you have. So there's no vote required, but I think just giving consensus as to whether or not you feel like they should move forward.
Do you want to start?
Well, I'd love to hear from Alan.
As the select board member who also sits at a trustee, I fully support this. You know, is, this board is technically the property owner, responsible for the property. The trust is coming forward now again to say, is it okay to go forward? I want to emphasize that the draft design, what the units look like, is just a hypothetical, that the trust has discussed potentially having one of the units being a single-floor, fully wheelchair-accessible unit to meet, you know, that need. And we'll really look at where we see market need for it. It's also not definitive yet whether these would be built to be sold or be built and be managed as rental units, again, depending on the overall need. The intent of the trust is that these units, whatever form they take, would be SHI compliant in perpetuity and would be deeded and managed that way. And so a quick note on fortyB and friendly fortyB. FortyB is a way to build where the actual comprehensive permit for construction is issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, who are not bound to town zoning regulations. A friendly fortyB is where the builder, which would be the trust or the entity looking to build would be the trust, would work out all of the details of the plan and get agreement with the planning board. Would also go through the normal site plan review and other review process with other boards and committees. And then with the support of the planning board and other town boards and committees, go to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the project. And would not approach the ZBA for the comprehensive permit until there was already agreement by the town that the project would be acceptable to the town. And the trust is committed to following that, that process.
Thank you.
Kudos to Hank for this concept.
Yeah, so okay, well, again, I mean, you all know where I live and what my phone number is. If, as you ruminate, think about this over the next weeks, you have questions, feel free drop me an email, give me a call. I'll be glad to spend time and talk with you.
Can I ask just a couple of questions? So thank you so much for bringing this forward, and as always, the trust is so comprehensive in its work and really appreciate all the time of all the members. So would it be the intent then of, so would there need to be a zoning change? I guess when you say going to a town meeting, would that be the first part? Does it have to change from M1 to R something?
We would not go, we would not go to town meeting looking for a zoning change on the property. We would look for, the town meeting would authorize the selectmen to transfer the property to us. Once we have site control, we would then go through the friendly fortyB that Alan described. I, again, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe you have to have site control. So you either have to have a power, you either have to have a purchase and sale or you have to have, you know, a recorded deed. Typically, when I've seen this done before, the community puts together a land development agreement with, as part of it, that explains how the property's going to be developed. No, we would not go for a zoning change. We would go, we would go, basically, the article, the article at town meeting would be almost identical to the article we just executed with the Baylor Avenue property. Authorize the selectmen transfer the property to the trust for purposes of a more housing kind of...
The planning board would need to subdivide the property to define, to define property lines for this development.
Sure.
And the exact dimensions of that would be based on the project and discussions with the planning board.
So ultimately, is the vision of the trust that the trust would continue to, if these were rental, that the trust is maintaining that? Or they would, this whole, this would be under the control of the trust to then be sold to a developer to build units in perpetuity, whether they be sale or rental?
I just wanted to chime in. Ed Bain, Five Thomas Rice Drive, I'm Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. That's a little bit down the road. We would not, the trust would not be interested in being a management agent if we were to make it rental units. We would look for some other entity to do that. Really, our focus is more in development, repurposing, et cetera, properties than being the management agent. Because that entails, you know, you're then a landlord. We don't want to be a landlord with that. But as we mentioned, it would have to be not rezoned because the ZBA and/or the planning board would issue a comprehensive permit, which would, if you will, supersede any zoning for that area. So we wouldn't need to bring that to town meeting. The only town meeting action, I believe, would be the permission to transfer a piece of that property to the Affordable Housing Trust for purposes stated.
I'll just say that I was pleasantly surprised to see this project, and I think, I appreciate your work that you put into it. Explained a lot of, a lot of information that I was kind of curious about. And I also just say that I'm glad to see the creativity in locating a piece of property because I certainly would not have identified that piece of property. So what a great use with that road, you know, Endicott Drive, just dropping off right there.
Hank driving all around the towns of Westboro. G.I.S. loaded up in his car.
It's interesting. Hank's pretty much run with this. He was the one to identify. But I think people in the, on the trust now, when you, when we drive around town, we're like, always looking for, because Westboro's pretty built out. There's not a lot of available parcels that would be appropriate for affordable, either, you know, that are even affordable to build affordable.
It's a great, from what I can tell, and certainly I haven't heard from the rest of the community yet on it, but, you know, it seems like a great spot for it. A lot of good public interest right nearby there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you for your time and your support.
Fully supportive.
Thank you. Next, we have the Chief Assessor Job Description and Classification Plan. Our Assistant Town Manager?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we're looking for the, so first of all, with apologies, the draft you should be looking at is the one that was on the table. There are two minor changes, but important, and they're highlighted in yellow. The position on page one, the position actually reports to the Finance Director. Per the charter, the town manager's the appointing authority, but when we established the Finance Department, created the Finance Director position in 2017, that was done. This position reports to the Finance Director. And then the other change that was not in the version in your packet, under education or experience, we intended to update the five years of experience to increase that, so it will read seven to ten years. But just stepping back in terms of, with the creation of the Finance Department a number of years ago, we have been, we took this opportunity to look at some of the changes that have happened in the past number of years and just wanted to update the job description to reflect what the job currently entails.
I think that, John, our current, the current employee in the position, but really just looking at the position, it's, you know, the work of the Chief Assessor is extensive, and in Westboro, we don't contract out any of the responsibilities of the Chief Assessor, whereas in several communities, you might see that we, that they might contract out commercial work or personal property work, and in Westboro, all that work is done in-house. And so we wanted to make sure that the job description reflected that. In terms of the length of experience, it says, it probably sounds kind of long, seven to ten years, but we think it's really important. You know, we joke, you don't go to school to be an assessor. That's, you don't sort of get your masters in that. So really, the benefit of having a very experienced assessor is really important to Westboro, given that we, the expectation is that the work is done in-house.
Thank you very much. Comments?
So, comment and a question? So I'm just curious, so I think the changes are great. They make sense. I am curious to know if our current assessor had any input into this.
Yep.
And just a comment, maybe to amend your, your comment, Kristi, is that, and just for transparency with the town, is that through the ARBA process and the meetings we had, we did approve, this board did approve some funds which are not traditional to allocate to the Assessor Two contract, really to catch up from COVID barriers to entry and work that were mandated by the state.
Correct. Yeah, that's a good point. So that's actually field inspection work that's done by other folks in the office. And, you know, while our assessor will go out to properties, that's field inspection work that, as you mentioned, as was mentioned before, we were unable to do during the pandemic.
Just, I just wanted folks to say, wait a second, we just said we didn't contract...
Right. No, that's a good point. That's a great point. Thanks.
Thanks, Shelby.
Sure. I'll just say, I think all of the additions are appropriate, and I think they certainly meet my expectations of the role. So thank you for making these modifications. My one question is on the job code. It's changing from an S-15 to an S-8?
So that just shows you how old the job description is. So prior to 2018, our S codes were, I think, eleven to twenty-something, and then we changed it, and now they're, I don't know, one to eight. So it was previously an S-seven. The job description never got updated, and so this is changing it to an S-eight. So that fifteen is very old.
Okay, so now I can relate those two on the rate sheet.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? It looks good. I agree. I think very thorough and worthwhile, and glad we went through this exercise. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the changes to the Chief Assessor Job Description as presented and further to amend the classification of this position from S-seven to S-eight.
Second thought? All in favor? Four zero, four being present. Kim, thank you very much. Next, update personnel policies to include the Juneteenth holiday. Also, Kim.
The board previously, we previously had discussions and received authorization from the board relative to Juneteenth holiday, which this year is observed on Monday, June 20th. The holiday is June 19th. The, this is a holiday where municipal offices are required to be closed on the date that is observed. So this year, we will be required to be closed on Monday, June 20th. As I said, the board previously authorized us to negotiate with the unions and non-union personnel, but we are also at this point just looking to formally acknowledge that in the personnel policies which cover non-union staff. So it will be treated as our other paid holidays. Staff will not be required to report to work. Non-union staff for the personnel policy, they will receive their normal pay for that day.
And last year, we didn't have to do this, although the holiday was declared before June 19th last year. It was on a Saturday, and so there was no...
There was no impact for us. Correct.
Any questions?
I'll just state that I'm gonna recuse myself, as my wife is a member of the Clerical Union.
You actually don't have to, only because your update right now is just to the personnel policies. The Clerical Union contract specifies holidays, and that would be a different action, so...
Kind of...
Yeah, I know.
I was kind of iffy on that one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for checking. Any other comments or questions? Pretty straightforward?
I would move to amend Section 5.4, holidays of the personnel policies in employee handbook and to include Juneteenth as an observed holiday.
Second?
All in favor? Four zero, four being present.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Kim. Next, the annual reappointments to boards, committees, and positions.
So you have listed in your packet several reappointments. Sheila did send out notice to all the boards and committees requesting that they respond by June 3rd with their interest in being reappointed. At the same time, she advertised the positions, which is why you also have some committees that you'll have to take up separately because you have more interest than you have vacancies. But for these folks, this is all that has shown interest and their reappointments. So those are listed. I think we typically read them.
Okay. I guess I comment first. So this year is the first year since we've implemented the new committee handbook.
Correct.
And so for part of that, we're saying appointments aren't, are not, reappointments are not automatic. And so we have some committees here where there are openings, and we've gotten requests for those openings, but the requests are greater than the number of available openings. I think also because this process is new, you know, not all the boards maybe fully, you know, understand what potentially could happen here. Because some of these are oversubscribed, I don't know if some of those boards may want to re, some of the individuals on those boards may want to reconsider when they look at the potential candidates. So as an example, I look at the EDC. There are three terrific candidates for the EDC, and there is one opening. So, as an example, I look at the EDC, there are three terrific candidates for the EDC, and there is one opening. However, some of the other folks who have, it's all one-year appointments, who have re-upped, looking at those candidates may be willing to reconsider. I, I don't know if we sort of give them an opportunity.
Sure. So, for this agenda item, this is just boards and committees where they're not over-subscribed.
So, that's the long list.
Right. So, the long list that you have, that's, those are just folks who want to be reappointed, and we haven't received any additional interest for those positions.
This is the list.
That entire list would be all...
Okay.
Where they're not over-subscribed. Like, EDC is not included there.
Got it. Got it. Okay. So, yes, I, I heard a couple offers to read this list.
Okay, I'll start. Okay, so, Marie Ananat, Spirit Committee for a one-year term at Bain Affordable Housing, Westboro Affordable Housing Trust for a three-year term. Linda Birch, Council on Aging for a three-year term. Roberta Brown, Spirit Committee, one-year term. Daniel Berger, Open Space Preservation Committee, one-year term. Colleen Dow, Recreation Commission, three-year term. Paul Friedman Jr. to the Veterans Advisory Board for a one-year term. Michelle French, Cultural Council, three-year term. John Gelchek, Open Space Preservation Committee, one-year. Avanov Jane, Youth Commission Student Member.
I should say two years.
Two-year term. Christian Hedrick, Historical Commission, three-year term. Paul Horrigan, Veterans Advisory Board for a one-year term. Michelle Hung, Sustainable Westboro High School Student Member for a one-year term. Recreation Commission, we'll be Brian Kane for a three-year term. Stephanie Kelly, Sandra Pond Conservation Area Warden for a one-year term. Justin Lundberg, Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term. Leah McLean for the Westboro Federal Housing Trust, three-year term. Doug Markot, Sandra Pond Conservation Area Warden for a one-year term. Kelly Marston, Open Space Preservation Committee for a one-year term. John McCann, Council on Aging for three years. Alicia O'Brien to the Veterans Advisory Board for a one-year term. Marjorie Pierce, Historical Commission for a three-year term. Hallie Pelish, Sustainable Westboro as a high school member for a one-year term. Jay Marshall Preston, Veterans Advisory Board for a one-year term. Hadiq Akazi for, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing any names, Youth Commission Student Member for a two-year term. Daniel Schur, Representative to CMRPC for a one-year term. Stefan Solomon, or Stephen Solomon, to the Spirit Committee for a one-year term.
I think you skipped one.
Oh, Donald Sealy Jr. for the Open Space Preservation Committee for a one-year term. Teresa Spetafora for the Cultural Council, three-year term. Earl Story, Recreation Commission, three-year term. Kate Storm, Youth Commission and Adult Member for a three-year term. Nancy Strucker to the Spirit Committee for a one-year term. James Tepper, Veterans Advisory Board, one-year term. Andy Turek, Veterans Advisory Board for a one-year term. Alexander Turnus for the Veterans Advisory Board, one-year term. William Wallace, Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term. Robert Washburn, Council on Aging for a three-year term. And Rachel Weinsberg for Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
Do I have a second? Second thought?
Can I just ask a clarified question? So, the Sustainable Westboro Committee was one of those committees that was called out for over-subscribe, but they were over-subscribed, my interpretation, for the resident, non-high school?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and I just make the comment, I think it's fantastic that we are appointing four high school students to committees today. All in favor? Four, zero, four being present. Thank you all for putting your names forward for these committees. Yes. Now, with Select Board concurrence?
Okay, so, move to concur with the Town Manager's appointments, which are Melinda McKendrick, Animal Control Officer, one-year term. Kimberly Foster, Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, for three-year term. Leah Talbot, Town Accountant, three-year term. Heather Crump, Disability Commission, three-year term.
Do I have a second?
Second thought?
Are those specific titles, or?
You mean, the Finance Director?
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Did I get a second?
Patrick.
Patrick seconded. Thank you very much. All in favor? Four, zero, four being present. Okay, next, we have appointments to the following boards and committees, EDC, Conservation and Sustainable Westboro. I guess this is where I should have made my prior comment about these boards being over-subscribed. Appreciate all the members of the boards who have requested reappointment, and all the individuals who have applied for any open positions. You know, I, I guess I'm thinking maybe we defer this and allow the committees to touch base and see if there are those who may be willing to update their position.
So, are you asking that we send something to the chairs and just let them know that there's competition?
People.
Well, because I think it, sorry, I think it creates an opportunity. I mean, I remember when I served on the EDC, yeah, the ambassador role at that time that was called was, you know, was undersubscribed, so there may be an opportunity where a current member says, I really have a passion there for doing something like that, or, you know, a, a member, an interested individual may take on a role that is not a, a specific, you know, kind of voting committee member. So, within these committees, I know Sustainable Westboro has a lot of work ahead of it, and so there certainly may be opportunities for folks to become engaged if they're not already, other than just being on the committee.
Yeah, and, and I think these folks have probably been reappointed multiple times and, and had no one else they knew of that was interested in their committee, and now, they may feel this is an opportunity actually for them to...
The other component of the, some other component of the request, I would go to committees, is individuals looking to join a committee or sending letters of interest with a little bit of background information. I think for these three committees, and any others that we're doing reappointments for, where there's, you know, more interest than in our seats, a brief summary from the chair, from the individual, you know, how long they've, you know, sat on committee, any leadership roles they've had, would be beneficial.
Right, and...
And, and to know...
It wasn't asked. I mean, those members...
It wasn't asked, and so, it's, it's not that anyone's done anything wrong, it's due process, we're figuring this out. I, you know, I don't think we want to get into a position where everyone up for reappointment has to come in and do a presentation to us, and have that, have that process, but a little more background, and, you know, you know, with the guidelines we create with the committee handbook, part of the process is to foster new ideas and voices and membership and refresh committees. Not because we want to ever kick someone off, but a committee's health, you know, and functioning, and longevity, and success does require some new perspectives, you know, over time. And, you know, broadens our ability to, you know, expand the involvement of members of the community in the operation of town government, so.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think it's why with a lot of boards, we stagger, right, three-year terms, so that you maintain experience while hopefully bringing on new thought, new ideas.
Yeah, I would just, I guess dovetail onto what Alan said. As a relatively new member to this board, a lot of these people were appointed before I joined, and therefore, I did not see, you know, the information that they provided at the time of their application. I would love to better understand, you know, what, what great talents they bring to these boards as we look at re-upping them and, and other candidates, so, excellent point, Alan.
Yeah, I, I think for the four individuals who were appointed to the EDC early this year, we could probably pull up, redistribute what, what they provided at that point. Yes, everybody comfortable deferring this item to next meeting? Okay. All right. Passover. Do we need a motion to pass over, or we just pass over?
We can just pass over.
We just pass over. Okay. Okay. All right. So, next item is the Select Board Appointment to the Waste Management Exploratory Committee.
So, this is a committee that was established at your last meeting, and we talked about the previous committee established under the Board of Health is going to disband, and we're creating this Waste Management Exploratory Committee. It would do a comprehensive look at waste management in town, consistent with one of your goals. So, you had set up, the composition of that committee is four residents, a representative from Board of Health, select board, and Sustainable Westboro. So, you just need to appoint someone from this board.
The committee is going to be led by you and, or you and the staff?
Staffed, yeah, by myself and John Sullivan. Yep, the Public Health Director.
So, start. Is there anyone who's interested in the appointment?
I can, I'll throw my name out there, but I would just point out to the board that I do have a family relationship with the Harveys, albeit pretty distant. E.L. Harvey was Julia's grand, great-grandfather, and Harvey's is being sold, I think, as we all know, so I'm not sure what the status is of that, but if that's something that needs to be understood, I just wanted to disclose that to everyone as you think about it.
I, I think, so Patrick, I think you'd be great. Unfortunately, I guess, I would say, I think that that's even as distant as, distant as it is, I think it's a little too close to home. So, appreciate, yeah, you're making the point. Appreciate your busy, go ahead.
I'm not so sure, given that Harvey's has been sold.
Although I think there still is a...
Well, I think that there's a...
Operational component.
I don't know. I, I feel like there's a, a kind of a threads in this cultural kind of component that I think would actually make it, I wouldn't want to be viewed, quite honestly, on that committee. I think that, I think it, I mean, I don't know where the work of the committee is going to go, but I just, I, I think it could put you, you know, you might not get invited to Thanksgiving or something. I'm just kidding.
No, no, all excellent points, and, you know, I'll just say, I'm very interested in the work of the committee from the perspective of, I would like to better understand, as I mentioned, one of our previous meetings, recent meetings, you know, to better understand the data that surrounds this, and I even made that point, Sustainable Westboro at our last meeting as well. So, I'll retract, I just threw it out there.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you for offering.
I had also noted in your packet, I guess it's like, you're not going to be surprised for me to hear, to say this, but I do think that this committee being an ad hoc committee with a particular goal and not a permanent committee, is going to probably meet more often than the typical once a month with work in between.
And I think you indicated that you would expect that there would be significant, I mean, Christine, I had this conversation, that work over the summer and...
Yep. I, I do think it's going to take a fair amount of time for all the members.
So, I think Ian's not here, we just nominated him.
Yeah. So, I will, I, I... I'm, actually, I think this is really interesting work, but I think a lot of what we do is pretty interesting. I know that as a board at our retreat, we talked about, you know, some changes to liaison relationships, and I, I do know that coming before diversity and inclusion, as we, as the board knows, that I think that the construct of that committee may be changing, where an appointed member from this board would no longer be a member, but there would be a liaison role. And I know we've talked about potentially changing some things up. I hate to say it here, because I haven't discussed this with Hakamaka, but we've discussed that Ian might take on Hakamaka, and, you know, we may transition that. I mean, I don't think that that's been finalized, but, so, the short answer is, if, unless the two gentlemen to my right are like, I want to do it...
Are you sensing that?
Very careful to have their hands by their sides.
I, I think it is, there's a tremendous opportunity here, but I, yeah, I, I don't think I'm available to make the, the commitment to it, so, and I, you know. You'll do great.
Alan?
The time commitment required, just particularly over the summer months, would be troublesome, so. It'd be interesting, it's an interesting problem to solve, but...
So, let me just say, second?
Can't self-nominate.
Oh, oh, you didn't nominate yourself?
I mean, Ian is not here. Has he, in fairness to Ian, has he expressed any interest?
Not to me.
Not to you. Okay.
I think we can make a decision, and then if, if...
Yeah.
Ian presents as extraordinarily upset that this happened, we could reconsider it in future.
Yeah, seriously. I mean, seriously.
So, so, but you make a good point, you should not nominate yourself, so I...
I will move to appoint Shelby Marshall to serve as the Select Board Representative to the Waste Management Committee.
I'm wondering if I should recuse?
I'll second.
Well, just for the reasons stated, so.
Yeah. All in favor? Thank you, Shelby.
I like these exploratory committees. Let's explore.
Next, we have interdepartmental transfers, and there are a few.
Yes. So, interdepartmental transfers, just as a reminder, happen in May and June, and that's when the line items, money can be transferred between line items that are voted in a town meeting. At town meeting, the majority of departments, you, with the town meeting votes a salary and wage line, and they also vote an expenses line. In May and June, the Select Board and the AFC together needs, not, not at a meeting together, but as joint signatories on a form, can approve the transfer of funds between these line items. One thing that's really important to note is that there is no specific connection between the budget that's being transferred from and the budget that's being transferred to. It's just the budget that has available funds and the budget that's in need of the funds. So, the first one is the electricity budget. That fluctuates every year. We typically have an interdepartmental transfer for the electricity budget, and so this would be just a approval to make that transfer. I'm just going to jump down to the, so that's from the Finance Department, salary and wages of $15,000 into electricity budget, and that money is available. We had a vacancy in the Treasure Collector's Office for several months, so that's why that money is available.
Can we do these collectively as a single motion?
Do you want, do you want questions all together, or do you want them individually?
Individually.
Okay, so, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I'm just curious, is this a usage issue, or is this because the cost of the electricity is more?
Well, we're under contract, so, in terms of the cost for supply, but, I mean, it's, it's really just under, just the usage, and, yeah, it's really the usage.
Does this, is this all town buildings, including schools, everything, is all?
I believe it's just town buildings. Yeah. Just town buildings.
Okay. Okay.
So, I don't know if this is where you're going, Patrick, but, Kristi, with the, with fails being on board and it being a, my opinion, you know, a town building, but it might not align with, you know, with this contract, being that it's pushing... Maybe, maybe this is for a bigger discussion at some point. I guess I, I don't have a good understanding of, as we add solar to buildings, how that, my understanding, it's producing more energy than, you know, that building needs, and it's coming to other, to the benefit of other town buildings.
So, right, so it wouldn't affect this, so Kim, just confirm that the school buildings are not included in this budget.
Okay.
But, so the, so buildings that have been renovated, town buildings that have been renovated with maybe more efficient systems, also have much bigger systems than existed before in terms of HVAC. So, we're seeing a higher usage despite that. With the fails school in particular, my understanding is that it's going to fully meet all its own electricity needs.
My understanding is it's going to exceed that and push back, so...
But that's going to be, that is a bigger discussion, because we also have the power purchase arrangements that we need to consider.
So, it's, I think at some point, I would really, I would like to understand that, because...
Yep.
Yep. Correct. Yep, sorry.
But that's exclusive of this budget. None of the, none of the buildings on this budget have those types of solar arrays or anything like that.
So electricity?
Okay. The next one is only Board of Appeals, moving money from the salary and wages to expenses, so a total of $500. And that's for increased costs related to legal advertising. With the pandemic, there's additional verbiage, as you all know, required in the legal advertising, so the cost would increase.
And that amount is just?
$500. The next few transfers are all related to the insurance budget. Every few years, so we budget annually for people moving on and off of our insurance, but as this year, we've had several, several people coming onto our insurance, and so, Kim, do you want to speak to that?
It was an unusual year in terms of net increase of our subscribers. We picked up about 50, which is unusual. Couple of things to keep in mind. Some of the things that that got us that high. We had a lot of staff turnover, specifically retirements, many of them on the school side. After COVID, it's something you've heard talked about. Our retirees are able to stay on our plans before they become Medicare eligible, so we keep them on the plan if they choose to stay. We can also pick up retirees on our active plans if they retire and have coverage with a spouse for a period of time, and then perhaps need to come back on to an active plan.
After they retire?
Yes. We also, so as they retire, they may hang on to the insurance, and then the new hires may pick up a plan. You could have a situation where retirees on an individual plan, new hire's a family plan. We also know that we picked up a number of employees who, at the time of hire, they were covered under their parents' plan. Coverage is up to age 26, so when they age off of their parents' plan, we have picked up a number of those individual, and then we have just had a number of folks that they've had some sort of qualifying event, perhaps related to the economy, that they have become eligible. They weren't on our plan. They became eligible due to a qualifying event, picked it up. So overall, we picked up 22 new individuals on our family plans, and we also had a number of new retirees on our Medex plan. So there's much lesser costs, but we're kind of seeing it all, all sides. So that's the significant driver this year, and that's something as much as we try to identify when we're putting the budget together, this was an unusual year.
Do you want to speak to what we talked about earlier?
Sure. So a couple of things that we have absolutely benefited from this year. You may recall a year ago, we created criteria. The unions agreed to criteria to join our PPO, our Preferred Provider Plan, which is a more expensive plan. We had about 25 fewer PPO subscribers this year with those criteria in place. So we achieved savings on that side. We're also introducing a high deductible health plan, which will have a lower premium. So the way the premium is split, the town will achieve some savings, even with our contribution to an HSA. That plan, we're currently in the open enrollment period. That plan will start on September 1st. So our expectation there is both short-term savings, as people may move off of a more expensive HMO, but also long-term savings typically seen with individuals who are on high deductible plans.
So we have four transfers related to the insurance budget. And so the first is, the first is $9,000 from the election registration salary and wages, $25,000 from conservation salary and wages, $4,000 from Advisory Finance Committee salary and wages, and $32,000 from Finance Department salary and wages. And then we will also be asking the Finance Committee, in addition to approving these interdepartmental transfers, to to make a reserve fund transfer for the, for the delta. A few years ago, we had something similar happen where we had to go to town meeting, so having this extra money in the budget, we're able to deal with the overage.
Perfect. And the Advisory Finance Committee, I think we replenished their budget at town meeting, correct? So they've got $250,000 in there still. Okay. All right. Any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, our packet says 40 individuals, which we normally anticipate 10. Kim, you said 50.
It's closer to 50. It's, it's hard to be precise because you're looking at numbers. You're having to look at a point in time. And you're, you know, you have individuals who might move on for three months out of the 12-month year. So we looked at the number of subscribers at the beginning of the year. We look at the number of subscribers that we have today. Not every one of those individuals. We had people who could have picked it up last month or the month before.
Also included. Net new, net new is 50 new subscribers.
Yes, when we looked at July 1 to June 1.
And that, so those are the subscribers. That doesn't count additional family members.
Correct, but that includes, that includes folks who are subscribers on individual plans and family plans.
Right, but I'm just trying to understand the actual number of people now covered. I'm just, for argument's sake.
It doesn't include dependents, just subscribers.
Correct.
And so just as a reminder, also included in the insurance budget is our opt-out program, where the town saves significantly by paying an opt-out amount to people who opt out after having been on the town's plan. And this insurance budget fully covers school, town, and school and town employees as well as retirees. I just wanted to go back to Patrick's question about electricity. I just, one thing I should have said in terms of the fluctuation of usage, one-third of our electricity budget is streetlights, and so that's something that's very difficult to predict as, you know, so that's, it's not just building use, so I think that's important.
That's an interesting point. Being a member of the Green Communities Act, I know that we did light transitions to LEDs or lower-cost lights in some buildings.
Oh, in buildings, yes, sorry.
I'm just wondering on these lights, is there any, any opportunity for us to do that, to move off, or even get timed lights?
For streetlights. So we have had discussions with National Grid about transitioning to LEDs in the past. It hasn't really, it hasn't been something that was favorable to the town because currently the town doesn't own all the streetlights, and then we would own all the streetlights, and so, but there's, which means we would own all the repair. So, but I know that Chris is.
So if.
We got to pay for these lights?
Right now.
What light bulb is in it?
Well, no, no, right now the lights are owned and operated by the utility.
Okay.
If we convert them to LEDs, they will operate. They'll provide the power to them, but we will own and be responsible for maintenance.
Okay.
They're not going to pay to replace the lights.
But we don't have to have that discussion now because what I'm saying is, in more recent discussions, it's, they've changed the program slightly. So we're, so we're working with them on that potential change.
There's opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
With potential downside.
Good. Could I get a motion?
I move to approve the interdepartmental transfers as presented.
Second in. All in favor?
Can I ask it? Sorry.
I've been asking.
I know, and I know. So because this hasn't happened, I mean, I am going to vote favorably. I just, what happens if this, if these interdepartmental transfers are not approved?
Well, if the Select Board doesn't approve them, then we could ask the Finance Committee to use their reserve funds for these purposes, which would mean that they wouldn't be able to cover the deficit in snow and ice, which means that that would be raised on the taxes. Because we can deficit spend in snow and ice.
I just want to understand the effect of our votes.
Thank you.
Good question.
All in favor? Order zero for being present. There go the lights.
Thank you.
Cue the lights. All right. Move on to issues and correspondence. Who would like to begin?
I'll begin. So at a recent meeting of the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee, the committee has, is progressing toward coming before this board, anticipating being on the agenda for July 19th to present a, our, an update and a recommendation to this board. And I was unable to attend the last Act of Transportation Safety Committee, so I apologize. I don't have an update there. And that's, I'll keep it short tonight.
All right, I'll give it a go. I got some really good news.
All right.
I'd just like to share with the community that Westboro was the recipient of the CMRPC Community Resilience Planning Award. This is the first time this award has been provided. We had a wonderful event last Thursday where several members of the community were able to attend, representing the Planning Board, Sustainable Westboro. Christie was able to attend as well. So I'll just share, there were a number of other communities that were also awarded, Westbrook Field, Shrewsbury, Boylston, Northbridge, Douglas Sutton, Huxbridge, and then us. I would like to just express my thanks to all of the members of Sustainable Westboro and the Climate Action Plan Committee, as well as those community members that participated and supported the events that led to the winning of this award. I'd also like to just say thank you to Janet Pierce from the Executive Director of the CMRPC and her team. They've been a great partner with this town in working with us on many different projects above and beyond even these ones here, so I'd just like to thank that. And then I just, I'll read this real quick just so the whole community can see it, and I believe this will be posted in the Town Hall. It says, "Community Resilience Planning Award 2022 presented to the town of Westboro in recognition of your climate action plan, regional energy fair, continued efforts to reduce the carbon footprint in municipal buildings through, throughout the Green Communities Program, zoning and permitting updates that support the renewable energies facilities, and your town website with easy-to-find plans and educational materials. Westboro demonstrated leadership in environmental outreach and environmental sustainability with sincerest appreciation the Executive Director of CMRPC." And I'll just share this with the rest of the board.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
So I don't have much this evening. The Westboro Affordable Housing Trust provided an overview of the activities happening there, and we recently had a visit from the Spirit Committee about their plans for fireworks and other activities. So I do, you know, also just want to relay that I, in the last two, three days, I've received, you know, emails or calls or texts from residents who are starting to see the effects of some of the work that's been happening with economic development and downtown revitalization, and are appreciative of some of the new businesses that are opening and moving into town, not just downtown, and even some new small businesses have opened up. On Route 9, evidently there's a Hall of Comics, which has a lot of people excited that moved from Southborough into Westboro, so just wanted to relay appreciation to the departments, the Economic Development Coordinator and the committee for the continued work in, you know, bringing commerce and businesses and particularly small business into, into the community.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of items. First, and Shelby, thank you for this reminder, this Saturday is the 300th anniversary of Nurse Farm, and it will be a wonderful event. Please stop by to support this iconic local business. Also, Westboro Connects and Westboro Youth and Family Services is sponsoring an event, Reach Out Westboro Emotional Resiliency Training. It is Tuesday, next Tuesday, June 21st at 6:30 in the library. Please reach out to Youth and Family Services if you're interested in registering for this event. The Economic Development Committee met last week. Our Vice Chair, Linda Townsend, it was her last meeting, and she received a round of applause. Well deserved. I'd just like to call her out here again and say, Linda, thank you very much for all your hard work on the Economic Development Committee. One of the things that was presented at the Economic Development Committee by our coordinator was the new online business directory project, and it was pretty cool, and I think at some point in the next couple of months, we'll probably try and get Zach in here to show it to us. They are currently reaching out to businesses, and they are hoping to launch this summer, and I think will be a big benefit to local businesses. And the Library Building Committee, we met a couple of weeks ago, and our application to this state for construction manager at risk was approved, so now the committee is moving forward to, in hiring a construction manager. There should be an RFP out shortly, and we hope to have that individual within the next few weeks. And that was it for me. Any other comments? Then could I get a motion?
So I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Paragraph 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Fire Chief Patrick Purcell, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions, police supervisors, Department of Public Works, and clerical, and under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at Zero Ruggles Street and 231 Turnpike Road.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and negotiating position. The board will not be reconvening in open session. Could I get a second to the motion?
Second, bud.
Roll call, vote. Patrick?
Well, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Shelby? Anne Keough, yes. That is it. Thank you very much, and thank you, Westboro TV. Have a good night.